Good evening, Navy One. This work session meeting of the Lancaster City Council is called to order on Monday, October the 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have four items on the agenda tonight. Item number one, City Secretary.
Receive and discuss a presentation regarding the University of Texas at Arlington innovative plastic confused road reconstruction.
City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. This evening, we have a presentation for you. The University of Texas at Arlington Engineering Department has a professor who's done a lot of research. And in the course of our normal business, the Public Works Director and I came across some information. Our Public Works Director was very familiar with Dr. San's work. And they are working with TexDOT and doing some innovative things that is extending the life of asphalt roads. Because the largest majority of roadways in our state are asphalt roads. I know it's not as common as believed, but that is the most common surface type of roadway. And Dr. San's been working with TexDOT and doing some testing on some innovative ways to recycle, as well as extend the life and the quality of roadwork. And so, he's done one, only one other city, and he's got two more in the works, but wanted to present this as an option to you all. So, Dr. San's gonna come and make up a presentation to you on what this looks like, and what some opportunities are for the City of Lancaster. And so, he'll do a brief presentation and be available to answer questions. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. San to begin the presentation. It is in your Dropbox, so you can all can download it, as well as follow along on the schedule.
Thank you very much, Okon. And nice having the opportunity to talk about my project. And I talk a lot, but she give me only 10 minutes. So, I have to try to squeeze as much as possible, you know? And why we're talking about plastic road? You know, all the plastic that we recycle in the US, Europe, or any other country used to go to one place, China. 2018, China said, "We don't want your plastic anymore." So, that created a ripple effect across the world, because in the US especially, all the plastic that were generated was to send $11 billion industry. It was $11 billion, suddenly no industry. So, there are a lot of plastic left in the country, and we don't have many local use, because we used to send it to China. So then, in 2019, I went to TexDOT and say, you know, "Can you do some feasibility study of using this in the TexDOT road?" And they said, "Why you want to do it?" Number one, anytime the road is underwater, it deteriorates very quickly. And we also have, you know, locally and internationally, we also have major problems with the plastic. All the plastic that used to generate is to go to China, now we don't have a market. So, if we can find a local market, that will be very useful. One, we are using the plastic. Two, we have very serious problem with our roads. We have a lot of potholes, we have a lot of cracks during the summer and during the rainy season. Use of plastic has the potential to reduce both this crack and pothole. This was all theory in 2019, okay? So, we have two problem. One, plastic issue and pavement issue. Mixing it together, we're making plastic road. So, the fundamental idea is we're trying to use one problem to solve another problem. So, this is an ideal example of sustainability. But talking about it is one thing, and making it work is a completely different thing. When you're talking about plastic road globally, everybody uses mixed plastic for plastic road project. But I realized, if you look at this, you have seven grade of plastic, HDP, LDP, each of them had different melting point. When you go from lab to the plant, we are using the temperature to melt it and to blend it in the aggregate. So, if we mix them together, and we have different melting temperature, we may not be able to melt it together. So, I, what we did, we did individual component to mix with the mix, and it worked much better. This is the, you know, mixing that we did in the lab, you know, during the COVID time. And we did it in the lab. This was the result. The sample on the left is the regular asphalt mix. Sample on the right is the sample mixed with plastic. And, you know, just for visualization purpose, if anybody wants to see, this is a sample with plastic, and this is a sample without plastic. If you want, you can take a look at them. So, when you show this to TexDOT, you know, when you show it to TexDOT, TexDOT says, you know, "Dr. San, it's very easy to make things work in the lab." I said, "You are right." I was waiting for him to say that. Can you put it on the ground? Excellent question. Yes, I can, if you give me money. If you give me money to test it, I can test it on the ground. But, you know, another challenge was, if the road is underwater for extended period of time, is it going to work? So, in the beginning, we didn't have the answer. Then we did an additional set of test called moisture susceptibility test to check how it perform under water. And we found some of our mix that we use are gone. So, we have to redesign our mix design for it to make it work in the under flooding condition. And we found out why plastic road works better, because in our mix, we heat up the aggregate, then we put the plastic. Plastic creates a coating around the aggregate. Then when you put the bitumen, you know, so when there is water, water cannot get access to the aggregate directly. So, there is less water absorption, and life of the pavement goes higher, increases. So, there is one news that... That's, that was 2023, when you were in the lab. We didn't put it on the ground yet. 2023 summer, June, this is our parking lot. When you started doing for TexDOT, our university campuses, can we build a road in the road campus, so that you can show others how the road works? I didn't want it to do in the parking, because parking, the load is lot more than the regular road, because the car are sitting there. But I wanted to test it in a worst possible scenario. So, I asked them to give me a site. I wish they give me a site that will really work. They gave me the worst possible site. So, they put me really in danger. You know, the road was really messed up. This is the plastic we used. This is the plastic road we made in June 2023. This is September, October, more than two years, absolutely no issue in two years. Our maintenance guy built another section next to it without telling me. He repaired a small section, 20 feet by 20 feet, using our regular asphalt, just to see side by side how. So, once we build this, after six months, when I saw him, he called me, "Dr. San, I have news for you." I said, "What?" He told me that I did another one with asphalt road without telling you. So, I said, "What happened?" He said, "That cracked after three months." So, and I asked him, "Why you're telling me after six month?" That's a big news, you should have told, I mean, bad news, that the road cracked, and my road is not cracking, but you should have told me earlier. That means it is working, you know? In two, usually six month, you'll see some sign. In one year, if there is nothing, you'll see something. Two years, almost two, one mile section in two parking lot, absolutely no issue, okay? Then, just now, we finish this project in Dallas District, TexDOT. They are supposed to give me a low volume road. They couldn't find a low volume road, gave me a high volume road. I said, "Why you guys are pushing me hard?" Because if it is low volume, it's working, I can at least claim it's working. But they gave me a very high volume road. And that is in State Highway 205. We did the construction at middle of the night, because the road is too crowded to close it during the day. And this is the road section. And, you know, the road is still now. We did it in May, June, July, August, September, October, absolutely nothing. So, if any problem shows up, it shows up in one month. If anything, you need to wait for, wait for another marker, three months. If you close these two marker, most likely your road is going to be okay. And we ended up making, you know, they are supposed to give me 500 feet section, then we build it basically one mile section. They said, "Whatever the production at night, you have to do the intersection." I said, "I'm okay." So, we did it, so far it's working. So, if I have time, there is another video I can show. This was last month. And this is basically a few weeks ago. I came and visited Lancaster and visited some of the site, road condition, and, you know, this is one of the road, just took a photo here, okay? And in the news, they said, "You're talking, looking at the international project." Right now, I have, I've built one road already, because of time I didn't show, one in Bangladesh, under a very heavy traffic load, it's working. I am discussing with Ethiopia, Nigeria, Tanzania, three different projects. Last week, I had my, you know, most likely, I'll get the approval this week, I'm going to build a plastic road, multiple section, one in Riyadh, Saudi Arabia, and Jeddah. So, I'm going to have a contract with Saudi Arabia to build plastic road in the desert. Thank you very much. If you have any question, I'm here.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, what's the main difference? Just the plastic? Is the admitt, the binder kind of the same, or?
Yes. So, what we're doing, we're not adding as additional plastic, we are replacing bitumen.
Replacing what?
Bitumen. Bitumen is the binder.
Okay.
So, if you have 10% bitumen, in the asphalt mix, you have 95% aggregate, 5% bitumen, which is the well. Out of that 5%, we're replacing 10% of the bitumen with the plastic. So, because of the mix process, because it creates a coating around the plastic aggregate before putting the bitumen, it makes the accessible to the water and others very difficult. So, that's why the life of the road is a significant thing.
How does this, one of the issues I know for asphalt is the heat, the Texas summer heat.
Yes.
Really kind of...
Makes it up.
Right, makes it super soft and pliable. How does this act in the heat?
Excellent question. So, we put it in 2023. If you look at the historical data, 2023 was one of the hottest summer. We had no problem. Even last summer was very hot, we have no problem. So, I wish I had the other country. In Bangladesh, in the history of Bangladesh, 2024, April was the hottest day ever. The temperature was almost 47 degrees in terms of 110 plus in Fahrenheit, okay? Many road in Bangladesh, they started melting. People were driving over it, and the bitumen is sticking on the coil. So, I was very concerned what happened to my road. I sent somebody, they took the photo, the road was perfectly. So, under the heat, we tested it, it increases the heat resistance also. So, now, Texas heat and Saudi Arabia desert, they have similar heat pattern. So, if I'm confident enough to put it in Saudi Arabia, I'm okay with Texas. And based on last two years' result, we have absolutely no problem. But that's a very good question.
Next question, how's it compare to concrete PSI one? If you get, say, was that three inches, four inches thick? If you get the same thing as concrete, 4,000 PSI, is that kind of roughly?
We didn't compare it with concrete.
So, you haven't compared it to the strength?
No, no.
Okay, you don't know the PSI?
No, because, you know, concrete has a different volume of road. In TexDOT right now, they're focusing heavily on the interstate for the concrete road. But the State Highway and many other local roads are still asphalt road, okay? But that's a good question to compare it with the concrete PSI. I'm going to do it.
The fact is, your biggest competitor in Texas is concrete, you know, for asphalt versus concrete. Even in the City of Lancaster, we have awareness right now that everything has to be 100% concrete, there's not much asphalt that we allow on public, I mean, I'm sorry, on private property. That's one of the things I'm working on changing, and maybe I'll get with you and then see what these numbers look like too. Because I'm working right now trying to change, change ordinances to allow asphalt in private areas, because Lancaster does it on the streets. So, one of the things I'm looking at is a better asphalt to do that.
Now, we should not be comparing concrete with asphalt. Even in TexDOT, what they're doing, they're keeping the, like FM road and State Highway, most of them that is still keeping the asphalt road. The road that required heavy volume traffic, like, you know, you have lorry, lorry, what is that term? Somebody said lorry is a British word.
Eighteen wheeler truck?
Eighteen wheelers. So, TexDOT is asking me to build a road in, asphalt road in Laredo, close to the border, and they have all heavy duty trucks. Even there, I'm going to build asphalt roads. Because their point is, there are multiple reason. One, cost wise, this is lot cheaper, right? Number two, in terms of global warming, if it matters, concrete is the biggest source of greenhouse gas emission. On the other hand, plastic road reduces the carbon emission by 80% because we are using recycled plastic. So, it's not only the upfront cost and strength, in terms of global warming, this reduces the carbon emission cost significantly. So, that's why even in TexDOT, they are still reluctant to move everything to concrete, because their point is, we need to work on that green road. Green road means sustainable, and it's not that plastic, we have to use the plastic. No, we don't. But if we don't reuse the plastic, if, if everybody, we are always careful about recycling the plastic, right? What happens after the recycling? We're not asking the question. When China put the ban on it, many cities, I don't know give name, in Texas, after recycling, recycling costs six times more than the waste management, because the collection cost is high. They send, after recycling the plastic, they cannot find a market, they send it all back to the landfill. So, the issue is plastic road. Are you only looking at the plastic road and asphalt road? No, we're also solving a problem of, as much plastic you can use in the environment, that means we are solving a crisis that is taking over the world. So, you are right, should we compare it to the concrete? Yes. Are we going to directly compare with asphalt and concrete road? No, because two application is different. And the perspective of both of these are different.
So, would you feel comfortable for a municipality like us to allow parking areas with your material for, for traffic, for fire trucks and things like that?
Fire trucks.
Heavy vehicles.
Yeah, without any question.
Without any question.
Without any question.
You feel confident in your asphalt road?
Yes.
Because if you're saying you're going to do a commercial road or highway in Laredo with heavy traffic, you feel confident that one of our fire trucks could go?
Without any doubt. Now, remember, when you build the asphalt road, you have multiple grade, 6420, 7020, 7628. The load increase is not changing, the aggregate strength matters, the sourcing, but another thing matters more is the grade of the bitumen. The Laredo mix design, I don't have a mix design yet, because it's, the load is high. But I have a sense what I'm going to do. I'm going to bump up the bitumen grade.
What thickness are you going to?
Thickness is as usual. My target...
What's usual thickness?
For TexDOT, three inches in the surface. Some places, they have three and two surface, but base two inches, so five inch together. Some places only, for maintenance purposes, they are scraping of three and re-surfacing. So, depending on the city's need, anytime we're doing, let's say we want to do something for Lancaster, we're going to deal, take aggregate that you use and do the test in our left first, before putting on the ground. Because every time the source of aggregate is changing, our mix design is, we need to check it, okay? So, if you have fire truck, should I want to build it? Of course. Is my mix design going to be exactly the same as the low volume road? No.
Do you have different mixes?
Do have different mixes.
Different mixes in, into the, that chemical, so different ratios?
Different ratios.
Different ratios compared to volumes?
Yes, yes.
The type of road for traffic?
Type of for traffic.
So, can I ask a question? I didn't mean to cut. So, the road is scraped down to the, to the base, correct? And then this is applied on top of the base, it's like a, what we've seen here for many years, repair of the roads. The asphalt comes away, you got your subbase, they work the subbase, and then they come back and they put four...
The plastic, yes.
That's the process.
Yes.
Any special, any special equipment needed?
Very good question, no.
So, it's...
Because if we need special equipment or plant, my main concern was not the equipment on the ground, plant. Do I, do I need to change anything in the plant?
So, it's at the plant, and the plant is...
No change.
TexDOT?
No, the plant is the asphalt plant, different contactors.
Right. For concrete, you have batch plant, and so you got different companies, and you call out, you call, you order, and they mix it, and then they send it out in the truck, and that's when you place it.
So, basically...
Different companies, different location.
So, to answer this question, we don't need special equipment, we don't need any changes. We can use the equipment that you have. So, that's why the cost issue comes in the picture. Is it going to increase the cost? No.
I'd like to see a demonstration or know where this was applied.
Yes.
So, I can go out and take a look.
I want to invite you to, if you can come even this week, our parking, I'll show you, and I can take you to the, I don't want to take you to the very high volume road. Because they keep giving us, if you want to go, you have to control the traffic if you want to show somebody.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But in our parking, there's the beauty, you can come and see the road section that we build anytime. Last week, in fact, there was a local conference, national conference in UTA, and Parking Lot Association of the university campuses, 100 of them were here, and around 100 plus people visited our parking lot.
About the cost, or the costs, what's...
Very good. Cost is, upfront cost is lower or same. Why? Cost of plastic is much less than the cost of bitumen. So, we're replacing part of it, we're not adding additional, number one. Number two, previously, if you did maintenance every two years or three years or five years, the maintenance time required will be lot more now than the current time. So, if you skip one maintenance period, that itself will save you 50% additional money. So, it's not only the upfront cost, if you look at the lifetime, 10 years...
Over the...
Over that lit, 10 years period, life cycle of the road, the cost without any question is more than 50% saving, number one. Number two, this reduces the carbon emission, if it matters to any city. Climate control. It reduces the carbon emission significantly, because anytime you recycle plastic versus the virgin plastic, use of recycled plastic reduces the carbon emission by 80%. 80%.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, I, I guess, a couple. Initially, you were saying that you actually, there are seven types of...
Plastics.
The plastics. So, in your research, have you, are you still using the seven types, or are you specifying only...
Good question. How come you guys are so knowledgeable? You're asking very good questions. Some places I go, you know, one time, one person asked me, "Dr. San, if you're making the plastic road, when it floods, is the road going to float?" Oh, but it's okay, because if you're thinking the entire road is built with the plastic, it may float, you know? But this is an excellent question. So, if you look at the plastic grade, your question is, yeah, there are seven grades, right? Which are the grade we're using? We're using only three, we're scraping off all others. PVC never use, because it has contaminants. HDP, LDP, and PP, these three performs much better than anything else, okay? HDP is America, HDP and PP readily available. But if you go to the developing country, anytime they throw the trash, all the HDP is gone from the trash before it goes to the landfill, because people are scaring it. So, in Bangladesh, India, South Africa, African and Latin American countries, they always throw away one time use plastic bag. Those are LDP, and they are considered non-recyclable, and they are available everywhere. So, my point is, if there is no recycling value, and it's creating a lot of problem for the environment, can we use it? We did all the test, it doesn't work. No. Then I added something. I added 8% of LDP or maybe 1% PP with it, mix it together, what's that mixing? That means through the plastic road, you're also solving a major issue of HDP, LDP for plastic, one time use plastic bag.
Another question.
Yes.
Since certain ones are in abundance here in Texas, so you're not going to have a problem locating what you will need?
I can use more roads.
Oh.
The amount of plastic that I have, we'll have no problem. Because if you look at this, these are excellent question. I'm very happy I'm talking here. Look at this, we're generating 35 million tons. Only five to seven person are recycled. We can build, you can start using plastic in the entire TexDOT maintenance project, hundreds of thousands of miles, we still have plastic. So, this is a very good question, because everybody's saying, "You're making it look like it's a very good solution, but do we have enough plastic?" And you say, "I don't have problem. In other part, I may have problem."
So, with the process, I guess I was in the process of trying to get the city to allow this on private property. Would you be available in next couple of weeks to meet, so I can learn the properties of this, to bring it back to, to council to allow on private property? Would you be available in next couple of weeks to meet so I can learn the properties of this to bring it back to, to council to allow on private property?
Uh, I maybe in, what is.
No, just one-on-one, I'll buy you lunch or something like that.
Oh, yeah, okay, don't buy me lunch, buy me something good.
Okay.
Lunch is good, but I.
I would just like to learn more about your product because I, like I said, I'm in the process, I want, I want to use asphalt on private property.
Okay, I want to bring you, I will buy lunch for you. Come to UTA, I'll show the lab, I'll show the, the entire process and the site that we install.
I got your information.
You understand, yeah, so that will be much better and you can visually see what is going on there.
And I would like to know the standards and.
Oh, yeah.
A lot about concrete, don't know about asphalt.
Yes, yes, yes.
If you've been.
And, and if you're interested in concrete, there are group coming to me, they want to use the plastic in concrete mix.
Really?
Yeah, why? Lightweight concrete. The strength is going to be the same, but the weight is going to be lighter.
Would it replace rebar?
No, it will replace part of the aggregate.
Okay, so it's going to be part of the aggregate, not, not, not either.
Not delivered.
I don't know if you know much about concrete, right now they have fibers.
Oh, I have.
You put fibers in concrete.
Yes, yes.
They can use some places can replace rebar.
Yes.
So it would not, wouldn't be that, would just be more of an aggregate.
If we make the rebar with plastic, then we replace the leather.
So, so the wood replace the rebars, which is.
If, if I'm, if you, you know, ask me to test it, I will test it for you and give you a solution. Okay, but you know, I'm most likely I'll be in Argentina this weekend. So I'm going there for International Solitaries Association. So next week I may not be available.
Okay.
So after that, I'm all use anytime you want to say.
My name is Marco, so I'll be reaching out.
Okay, okay. So if I buy your lunch in UTA, next time it's on you.
Fine, you.
I'm making sure I'm getting a little nuts.
How is the plastic current, current color?
No, so what happened, you know, this is the plastic that I think of. Yes. So there are many kind of, you know, boxes or packaging material. They have this kind of plastic with that color, it's not that we added the color. So whatever, let's say we, I'm using mill jar. So if we shred it, it will be white plastic. So white or black, it's not going to affect our engineering behavior. Because if you come to see, if somebody else also wanted to see the road.
Let's make sure that we get our invitation after all of this.
Yes, so if you come to see the road, you're going to be very frustrated.
Where is your shredding plan at?
Oh, Dallas, there are multiple around here. You know, there is plenty of them, we get directly, you know, shipped to us from there. We have multiple people who does, send the material for us. Now, the reason I'm saying you're going to get frustrated seeing the plastic road, you'll be looking for plastic, but you cannot see anything. You'll be looking at exactly any other asphalt road. Okay, but that's a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah. Now, there is another thing I want to, you know, make sure that you understand that. Many people are concerned, if you're putting the plastic road, plastic is slippery, right? So our car is going to slide off the road. We did the sliding resistance test also. It increases the sliding resistance or decreases because plastic is never on the surface. You understand, the aggregate, the binding becomes stronger.
All mixed in.
All mixed in. Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
So since you have built some large areas of roads, then you've got people, uh, who are already geared to be able to do this.
Yes.
And if with this concept, the fact that it could take off, uh, could, obviously there's a lot of interest that then it would be diversified and more people would then begin to do this.
Yes.
So has there been, obviously there's probably been a lot of interest in what you're studying and what you're doing besides text dot. There, you've got to, and internationally. So how is that going to ramp up? Because this, this is a, a great concept, I saw the, both of the news stories, so I was intrigued.
Excellent question. That brings me to the question, why I'm still in the university? I should be studying the business. I get that a lot, that you know, you should be start the business. Because Maryland DOT contacted me after building State Highway two zero five. So they had set up a meeting, so I thought it's going to be two, three people attending. They brought all the state DOTs, chief engineer, engineer, everybody sitting in the room. They want to implement plastic road in Maryland. So I had multiple meeting and I'm helping them building a road in Maryland. Now, Maryland and Texas, there is a big difference between the two.
Temperature.
Temperature, that's cool reason. So in the lab, we can test only hot weather condition. We don't have the, you know, cold weather condition. But when you do the moisture susceptibility, we freeze the sample and we thaw the sample multiple times before doing the test. Just to see how much reduction in the strength. Our sample mix initially, it was reducing, but we changed our mix design so that it can sustain freeze and thaw cycle also. That's why text road is, you know, they're not helping me, they're putting me under different stress. Understand, they're very clever, I didn't realize why they asked me to go to Amerillo. Amerillo is the northern part of the state, temperature drops significantly. So I, I was very happy, oh, they've given me a new site, I'm going to build something new. Then I realized the temperature is different, so they're testing me. So yes, you know, it will affect now, it's spreading everywhere. So what university wants? University wants to patent it. Every time anybody wants to use, university makes money.
Yeah.
Okay, along the process, I also make money, right? But I have two objectives, as a university professor, I'm a full professor. I have, you know, I don't can go academically, I cannot go, there is no senior full professor. Full professor is the stock line. I can go after impact, global impact, the changing, something that affects everybody's life and make the things better. And I can go after only money. Because there are three venture capitalists contact, uh, capitalists contacted me. If I say yes, they're ready with twenty to thirty million dollars. Their point is you build your own plant, you don't have to go to any plant, you do your own mix and you supply in the entire Texas. How much is my investment? Only myself. How much they're investing? Thirty million dollars. Am I going to take it? I'm not sure, most likely no. Because if I take that over, all my activities that I want to put in different cities, I want to check and I want to see if I can really make a difference. Will be gone. You understand? So am I making a bad decision by sacrificing money and going after impact? I don't know. We have only one life. We have only one life, you know?
All right, uh, council member Derek Robinson, do you have any question? Council member Robinson.
He's, I mean.
Yeah, this is council member Robinson, what's up?
Do you have any questions?
No, sir, I have no questions, I'm just excited like Marco.
All right, well, we appreciate it, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much, it was pleasure talking, you know, I always love talking. If you don't stop me, all of you are going to be here till midnight.
Yeah, I tell you what, we gave you the extra twenty minutes.
Yes, that's what I was going to tell them, that I took much longer than is needed.
Yeah.
But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That, that moves to item number two, city secretary.
Receive and discuss a presentation regarding a proposed development agreement for a public-private partnership with Spectrum Properties for the construction of a city hall.
All right. City mayor.
Yeah, mayor. Members of council, this is a follow-up to your presentation from our last work session. And just as a recap, the information is noted in your agenda communication dating back to twenty seventeen. You identified the new city hall as a key strategic objective. Um, and in June of twenty seventeen, you all did some preliminary work and did some tours of some, some facilities. You paused the project and instructed staff to do a facility needs assessment related to our facility infrastructure. That facility assessment was completed by Randall Scott Architects in November of twenty twenty-two when you received that report assessing sixteen of our facilities and their facility conditions index. And out of that report, your index noted that the top five projects that you needed to work on were your city hall, seven hundred East Main, the animal shelter, expanding fire station three and your lion's den. And as you're aware, we are, are and have been working on all of the ladder, the three, four and five. And, uh, and the strategic planning session in June of twenty twenty-four, council instructed staff to proceed bringing forward the information related to a, uh, alternative funding structure for the facility assessment. And, uh, Spectrum Properties came forward and did a presentation to you at our last work session. You asked us to bring forward, continue moving forward and bring back a presentation of what the development agreement could look like and what those components would be. And tonight, back before you again, are Brian Bergerson, the president of Spectrum along with his associate Nick to do an updated presentation to you on what that development agreement could look like and what would be the next steps if you choose to continue moving forward.
Okay, so thank you, Opal. Uh, my name is Brian Bergerson and this is Nick Curry, we're with Spectrum Properties and we appreciate you having us here tonight. Uh, we're here to talk about potential development agreement for the city hall. So part of the objectives of having a development agreement is transparency, collaboration and local control. And what we mean by that is the guiding principles would be that the city retains ownership of the land. The city council maintains full oversight and approval authority. The design process would be both collaborative, transparent and also very, very important cities input and programming needs. And approach would ensure fiscal responsibility, flexibility and accountability. So part of the purpose of the development agreement is to establish a framework for the design, budgeting and future lease considerations. And the development agreement authorizes the city and the developer to complete design work with the city-approved architect, advanced design development so that there's a clear and accurate cost that can be determined and using that cost to, to work toward a proposed lease structure, both for the ground lease and the improvement lease. And eventually using that proposed lease structure for future city council review and approval. And the main thing, well, go back please. And the main thing is keep city council in control of all approvals and final decisions. So there are really three components to, uh, this development. And, and the first one is the development agreement and that's what we're talking about here today. And that basically sets out the framework of cities responsibility and our responsibility. And it allows us by defining the structure and responsibilities of the party that we can get started on the design process, the, uh, site alternatives and really getting the development underway through designing and getting to a construction, uh, document stage so we can bid the project and then at that point go into a ground lease and improvement lease. And the ground lease is important because that provides the rights for us to build on, on the site. And the improvement lease defines the terms of the city lease for future occupancy of the city hall by the city. So these are some of the roles and responsibilities that we define under the development agreement. So for the city of Lancaster, it would collaborate with us and the project architect on the design and programming needs, not only today, but in the future for the city hall. And then also if there's infrastructure improvements needed, they would complete the necessary infrastructure improvements. And then they would also work with us on replating and rezoning process if needed because the city would ultimately own the ground. So it's important that they work with us because it's their property. And then coordinate with, uh, the developer and city's manager's office toward the future ground and improvement leases, again, for future city council review and approval. And then on the developer side, again, we work with the city-approved architect and the city staff through design sessions to prepare architectural plans, uh, for the project. And we coordinate planning and budgeting, budgeting efforts needed to construct the city hall, which would then allow us to provide a lease structure for city council review and approval. So the ownership framework, the city would always retain the fee simple ownership of the land at all times. We would hold a leasehold estate in the land only for financing and construction purposes. And we would hold temporary legal title to the building improvements during the lease term, again solely for financing purposes. At the end of the lease, full ownership of the improvements would automatically revert to the city free and clear for one dollar. And the developer financing will be provided so that the city would not have to create debt or bond obligations to build a city hall. So what are the next steps? City council approval of development agreement is what we're looking at today. And that allows us then to go out, get an architect, look at the different alternative sites, figure out that along with the city, start the architectural process, get a full set of plans together, bid out the project so that we can come back, uh, for the improvement lease side of it. And so then we would, you know, leave, we would finalize the ground and improvement lease for city council approval. And then we would return to city council for approval of the final lease payment amounts and authorize the, uh, the ground lease and the improvement lease. And once that happens, then we start construction.
What's the timeframe for that there?
Which one?
This step right here.
Well, so obviously we have to work with the city to determine the alternate sites necessary. And then we have to work with the city to, to, to determine the, the architect that we want to use for the process. And then we have to design the process. So you're looking from, from soup to nuts, probably somewhere around four to maybe six months. So that's basically it in a nutshell, so we want to open it up to any questions you all might have.
Right, council, you have any questions?
Yes, this is, this is councilor Robinson, I have a question, I wanted to understand that you guys gonna, what, uh, percentage of minority participation are you guys gonna allocate for these projects?
Okay, well, well, in our previous projects, we allocated somewhere around thirty percent, uh, minority participation.
Do we have to put that in writing on the request or is that something you guys gonna do automatically?
It would probably be a good idea to have it in the development.
It's currently in council.
Council member Robinson, it is currently, the developer shall seek to achieve a goal of thirty percent participation by MWBE.
So it is in the agreement on page four. And council member, just to let you know where we are on this, I've reviewed the draft agreement, made red lines. And I believe risk management is also looking at it and then the city's builders rep will also look at it. So we're, we're well, um, well into the review. And audit.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I'm just trying to make sure we will easily consider some of the local vendors, uh, when they can participate in some of these projects and kind of keep something in home, in-house.
All right, so I got a question, so are you the finance company and the developer, the builder team?
No, I'm the developer and we get finance through our team.
Okay, but that'll be through you?
Yes.
Okay, so once we get the, so we get the financing from you and then once we come up, get the design, would it be competitive bidding or do you set the price for what that?
No, so, so since we're paying for it, right, we set the lease term for you all. We put it out to three contract, general contractors.
Okay.
That will bid it. And then we obviously look at their qualifications, make sure that we pick the most qualified, not necessarily the cheapest is the best.
Right.
And then, and then from there, we back into what the lease payment would be to the city.
Okay, so there will be competitive bidding, bidding after the design?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Since you're leasing it, you require the city to have insurance on this property?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to be responsible, so we'll be triple net, so we're going to be, we'll have, we'll buy, the city will buy insurance and we will do all maintenance, correct?
Yes, that's right.
So you're going to set up this triple net.
Yeah.
So on top of our mortgage, we got to pay for insurance.
Well, so getting back to the insurance, so I don't know if the city of Lancaster self-insures.
No.
Okay, so you would carry.
Right, have to carry something.
Insurance anyway.
So do we know kind of, I mean, there's probably more question for council, is this, is this all, we're talking about thirty thousand square feet, right? And what you brought up last meeting?
That's what we were, that's what we were told. But, you know, at this point, until we actually sit down with you all and program with the architects, we, we're just using that as a baseline.
Right, that's kind of the recommendation, thirty thousand, what you kind of heard from staff or whatever.
Okay.
Is it all going to be for city use? Did you say no?
No, I was asking, I don't think we gave him a square footage because he don't have a square footage yet.
I know last, last time you were here with thirty thousand was, was mentioned, so I didn't just come up with that number.
It might have, it might have come from, uh, the previous architect, GSBS.
I don't know where it came from, I just know thirty thousand was the number, it was two-story, thirty thousand square feet. Uh, so a hundred and ten parking space in the thing.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, so is it, is it going to be all for government use for the city of Lancaster? Is it going to have lease spaces, retail spaces in it?
Uh, we were, we were under the impression it's going to be all government use.
Okay.
That is currently how it's structured.
Okay, that's how I want to keep it, but, yeah, so, because I'm not, I'm not a big fan with, I, I believe government was set up to protect and serve, not compete. And whenever you get these governments, just entities like South Lake and like that, that builds something and then lease it, that's competition against the private side and I'm not for that, so that's one issues, but.
One of, I just to, to piggyback on that, one of the things you also have to be careful. Just to piggyback on that, one of the things you also have to be careful about when you lease something partially out to a for-profit, is that portion of the property could be real estate taxed.
Okay.
So that's another point to consider.
I never thought about that, good point. So all respects to y'all, I appreciate what y'all are doing, but I, as a council member, I cannot see us going somewhere to spend $30 million to finance it for 30 years, you know, it could be a $65 million investment. I just right now, I don't think Lancaster has better places, we need to spend that $30 million more than a city hall. And the more I talk to constituents after my town hall, I haven't got anybody that's for it. And so that's not for you, this is for council, everybody I'm talking to, they're very angry that we're even talking about it, and they're really angry about how quick we're talking about it again compared to the last time that we proposed it. So it's just one of those things I cannot support moving forward, I just, I think that $30 million, if we're gonna spend it, we put it in the infrastructure, you know, water lines, sewer lines, streets, fire department, police department.
Well, we're not sure it is 30 million, until we actually get a full set of architectural drawings and bid it out, we don't know if it's 30 million, we don't know if it's 20.
I'm just going off the square footage that was mentioned last time, the price that was mentioned last time, so that's why then any of us have to go off of this, what was mentioned the last meeting, so that's what I'm going off of right now.
Yeah, I believe you had asked me, what do you think the cost, we said, we don't know at this point, but we used the number between 25 and 28, which backed into the rental rate of around 175,000. Now, the 63 million you're talking about is that income, that stream of payments over 30 years.
One of the questions I had, and I bet, I bet, it's just a $1 buyout, because I didn't know after the lease, what was gonna happen.
Yeah.
Having a $1 buyout, thank goodness, that's at least part of it, so.
Yeah, and it's no different than if you had a $100,000 mortgage over 30 years, that mortgage, if you added up all that stream of payments, it's two and a half times, or $250,000. So, but it's over a 30-year period.
I get it, I'm not upset by what you're doing, it's standard business, I just, you know, I went to a Porsche dealership, it's not the fact that I don't like the car, can I afford the car, is really the question, it's not, the salesman's forcing me the car if I can't make the payments, I've got to know that, and that's where we are right now, is I'm trying to figure out, can we afford that right now?
I understand.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. Do you see the cost, if we push this back, do you see the cost going up, possibly going up?
It's a million-dollar question. I mean, interest rates are pretty high right now, maybe they'll come down, which will help, but right now, you know, I'm in this business, and I haven't seen any prices come back down. You know, they might not be going up as much, but I haven't seen any costs go down.
So by waiting, we could be experiencing, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson, you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I got a comment and a question for the city manager. Don't we already have the funds allocated for the structure, for the infrastructure that Marco keep talking about?
I can answer that, there's no.
Which infrastructure are you talking about, sir?
That's what I'm trying to understand, Marco keep talking about.
Well, I can answer that question.
The infrastructure that we don't have financing for.
If you, if you.
Don't we already have it in place?
If you state of our infrastructure, sewer lines, water lines, you'd be fearful. A lot of our sewer lines are at capacity, they're broken, we have a lot of issues with our sewer line, our water lines, heck, we had, what, two breaks a couple weeks ago that water was down for six, eight hours because we had what it took to repair it. So I mean, these are all, these are all signs of aging infrastructure, and so when I speak about infrastructure, I'm not speaking about any particular area of infrastructure, I'm thinking about all of our infrastructure overall, because we really haven't put any significant money in our infrastructure in the last 40 to 50 years. You know, streets are bad, water lines are bad, sewer lines are bad.
Everything's bad, right?
There you go, give me nothing. City buddy agrees.
No, I don't. No, I don't. And the reason.
Don't we have funds already allocated? Have we finished processing, getting the funds allocated?
If you list, is that true, city manager?
So I had to clarify which infrastructure you was referring to, so if you refer to streets and water lines, wastewater lines, stormwater, the answer is yes, in fact, you've already been talking about it, we told you about it at your strategic planning session, and in addition to the 30 million COs you did, you already are planning for the next set, and we're identifying the street projects that are supposed, I'm looking at the screen, might keep this in mind, but we're identifying the next set of streets that are in that over the last 10 years, that you all had said infrastructure was your top priority, we've given you numerous lists showing you how much has been spent in that. In terms of water and wastewater, our master plan says we're not at capacity, but that, I don't know exactly what Councilmember Mihail may be specifically referring to, but you also have $20 million allocated to do improvements and enhancements in your water wastewater infrastructure, you have $10 million you set aside to get ready to do your stormwater projects, so those are your three major sets of infrastructure, water, wastewater, streets, and stormwater, that, now that I understand what your question is, yes, and you will be getting your presentation on what those next set of streets will be in early December.
I'm just really relieved to hear that all our infrastructure problems have just been fixed, because every, I've been here 15 years, and that's not been the issue, and everything I look at is just.
That's not what I said, but.
Yeah, I mean, what about the sewer line going down to Mount Creek that you, we talked about during strategic planning, that has broken and at capacity, and had a bicycle in it? Is that part of the problem, is that part of the infrastructure you're fixing today?
So that's a TRA line, and that line is being repaired by a trade and road authority, that is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so why is it ours, why'd you bring up strategic planning?
Because what you painted TRA was a part of that, and we're advising you of all of that.
You know, it's easy to take and cherry pick various things and all of that, but one of the things, as a city, and I maintain this, no matter what, I don't care how much money we get in our budget, how large it gets, whatever, we're gonna always have things that we're working on, because we are a city, we don't sleep, we were blessed to get all these plants or these warehouses, but along with the warehouses came the traffic, which presented another problem. So whatever you do within the city, we're gonna always have something that we're tapping at, that we're working on, and nothing is going to get resolved overnight. It does not work that way, and you know that, Marco, and that's one of the things that I can't allow you to just pick out one thing or pick out and just, you can't do that. You need, the whole story needs to be told, not just something just to get people riled up, they need to know, they need to actually be able to see why the need for a city hall is necessary. When you got four people with four types of little desks in one room, trying to do a job, you know, that's one department, then you got another department, and you might have eight, I mean, they're on top of each other. Come on now, that in itself, if the truth was told, then people would better understand, but if you're just saying just enough to get them riled up, that does not, that's not truthful, that's not having integrity, and I can't sit by and just allow you or anyone else to do that to the city. Any city right now, any city right now would love to be in opposition, would love to, but they're not. We have always said, we're going forward, and we're gonna do it at a pace that is for us. You know, I say all the time, the race isn't given to the swift, but only to those that will endure, and this is something that we need, it is needed. We say we want to grow the city, well, by golly, we're gonna have to do something, because if we sit by trying to fix streets, people knew when they moved out here, this was rural, and it's just one of those things, this comes with the turf. But every time I hear where people are getting upset, baby, you gotta know the whole story, not no soundbites, I can do that all day long, I can rile up anybody, but that, it doesn't take that, we're talking about the future, moving this city where it needs to be, and we're already on the map, now it's time for us to truly do what we were sent to do.
I haven't said anything, I haven't, only thing I say to the constituents, $30 million for city hall, and they say, not with these roads, that's literally the only thing that's said, I say, those are two words, they take it from there. So I'm not trying to spin anything, I'm not trying to do any soundbites, it's just the facts are the facts, if you look at our roads, you know, we don't have $30 million for a city hall, period.
City manager, isn't it true that we, we got bond for $30 million to improve our streets, and that never, I don't think we've done that all the time, is that right?
The last street bond before the certificate of obligation you did in 2023 was a GO bond that was starting in 2007.
And how much was it?
In 2007 was 37.9 million.
37.9 million to improve our streets and roads.
In 2007, yes.
2007.
And then in 2023 it was 30.
30 million.
And you're preparing for the next set of 30 million.
Then we have a street maintenance program that every year, something that's set aside to continue to improve our, our streets and roads.
Yes, sir.
Do you know the amount that's in that, in that particular program?
I'll get the budget, I'll give you the exact number.
Because I know it's building up, and that's set aside just for infrastructure, streets and roads, is that right?
Yes, sir, you take a portion of your operation and maintenance tax, and instead of allocating that to operation and maintenance, you took a quarter cent, you set it aside for a street maintenance improvement.
My next question, Opal, in 2023, did we write a check for this 30 million, or we financed it?
You did certificates of obligation like you did in 2007.
So did we finance it?
So it's a bond.
So we making payments on it?
On bonds.
We're trying to get a question answered out of you.
On bonds.
So we're making payments on it?
On bonds.
So that is financing it, okay.
This will be a bond, correct?
No.
Okay.
It's still a debt, it's still a liability, when you have your assets, your liabilities, when you make the next of date, plus asset, it's a liability.
I'm sorry, I asked them, I just wanted to answer, gentlemen, this would not lead us into a bond?
No.
Okay, that's what I meant to hear.
Okay. I'd actually be more comfortable if it was a bond, because then you have to take to the voters to get it voted on, I think this is more of an issue for the citizens to vote on if they want it or not.
That's another soundbite.
It's not a soundbite, it's a fact, if the fact's a soundbite, then we'll take it.
Councilmember Camp, great question, a couple questions.
So I was curious, because any lease agreement that's done has to be, it can be structured anyway, so who has the responsibility of foundation of the walls and the roof, because those are some major projects that are items, I think about the stadium in Allen that they built, and the concrete was so bad, they went south of that, is there any check on being able to assure that quality that is gonna be put forward?
So the way it normally works is the general contractor will have a payment and performance bond, okay, they'll do the work, and then they'll give a warranty for that work.
For how long?
Normally, it's either one year, five year on roof, you can get more, it'll cost more, but you can get more, but we'll have structural engineers involved, so all of this will be engineered, so that at the end of the day, you know, with the payment and performance bond, and a good general contractor, you should get a good project. Now, in terms of down the road, you know, the city will have to maintain, you know, just like you would do any other building.
Well, just, that could be structured however in the lease, that there could be some responsibility on the person we're leasing from.
And then what we would do is turn around and make sure the general contractor has the same obligation term.
It'll cost them more money?
It'll cost more money, but.
Well, you have to look at all aspects of it.
City manager, do you foresee the city having a problem with paying bills, is that why we got A1 credit now, because we do pay our bills?
Say it again, Councilman Robinson?
I said, by the city having A1 credit, isn't that a proven factor or receipt showing that we do pay our bills on time, and do you foresee having a problem with servicing this debt that we're talking about tonight?
So we're not gonna be issuing any debt for this project if you choose to move forward, it's a part of your operating budget, the same way you make, I mean, we've leased facilities before, like we leased the Regent's Bank building, it's just a part of your operating budget, it's not a debt payment.
Did you hear her?
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand why Mr. Mahal is saying that we can't afford the debt.
I'm not saying we can't afford the debt, what I'm saying is, we shouldn't take on the debt, because you can afford something, doesn't mean you should buy something, it's a big difference, it's one of the reasons how you protect your credit, is by not overextending yourself and having some kind of self-restraint and control.
Okay, do you not think?
I'm trying to understand that, are we gonna overexpend ourselves, or? Well, something's gotta go, something's gotta give, and you got $175,000 plus insurance and maintenance.
We don't know what it is.
You got a budget, you're gonna have to give something, something else you're gonna have to give up.
Do we know what it is?
No, we don't know.
We don't even know what it is, so, again, and I'm gonna piggyback off of that, but this is something that we need, and it's been talked about for a long time, and we heard people, when they said we need our street rates, that's where the 30-some million dollars come in at, and then we have a maintenance, infrastructure plan in place, so we hear the citizens, and we've done, I believe we've done what they requested, but you know, at one time, to fix all of our streets, it cost us $100 million.
No, it's more than that.
No, I said at one time, the one time, what was it, how much?
It was over $800 million.
$800 million.
$800 million if we did all our streets, and that was in 2017.
And I would encourage people to drive around and see what we've done in the last past few years, you know, you might improve it.
Yeah, I think, I think at this point, we should be talking about the stuff that we have done, and show the constituents the things that we are doing, as opposed to saying what we should do and what we ain't doing.
Yeah, anyone else?
Well, the thing that I remember in my two cents to this conversation is, we hear the constituents with infrastructure, we hear the constituents with other multiple concerns, but we also hear the constituents say about our animal shelter as well, that's made, that's been a hot button in this community, has made, has made attention in this community before. It's my understanding, if I remember correctly, the city hall opens, the design in the building of the city hall opens the floodgates for us to be able to do what we need to do, and what we hear what we need to do with our animal shelter, that gets those people out of the other building, we move into that big building, and we have the animal shelter set up there, and the existing animal shelter becomes a specialty center. So you knocked out two projects, and then that also then carries into what we hear about our staff and firefighters, that opens up the floodgates for station number three to be considered as well. So it's a domino effect, and that's one positive that I carry with me, and I like to share in this, in this conversation. You know, I am concerned about our infrastructure, you know, the city is a living, it's a living document, so since, as far as I've been on city council, and talking about, I'm gonna pick out one road that I travel on quite frequently, it's Houston School Road between Pleasant Run and Beltline, that road's, in my existence on city hall, city council has been replaced twice already, so it's always ongoing, it's always ongoing, to support some of those conversations that have, but to support some of the conversations, you know, our inner-city infrastructure, there's no doubt in my mind that it still needs, it still needs attention as well. I hear about clay pipes, cast iron pipes, sure, okay, I know, and I feel real proud to say, as a council, as a group, we've made leaps and bounds and strides, as one of our colleagues up there may mention, you know, we should be, you know. Um, you know, we should be, you know, um, uh, explaining and be proudful of the things that we have already done. Not what needs to continue to be done. There'll always be work for this city. Always be work for this city. And the city's not even sixty percent built out. So there'll always be something to do. And there'll always be an offset to what our decisions are. We make a decision today, it's gonna offset something else. So that's my two cents.
All right. Anyone else? Well, thank you, uh, for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Can I make just one more comment about what you had asked? You know, there's all sorts of um studies that are done in anticipation of foundation, et cetera. They would call them geotechnical studies, which were actually do soil borings to determine where the rock is for peer drilling. To make sure that we're in the rock and what kind of rock it is and so forth. So there's all sorts of studies that are done on any one of these projects to ensure that you're gonna get a good quality project. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Do we get to say who the contractor is? Will that come back to us or does that solely rest on your decision?
Well, I think it rests with us and maybe the city manager. It could be you all. I I I just don't wanna bog down the process.
So so the three bids go out and then you present the three bids back to us?
That's right.
With the research?
So, uh, the other question, the, some of the projects that you have done the partnership on, the city of Dallas, you named two or three or four, several, uh, uh, Farmer's Market.
Right.
You did that one.
Yes.
And the result of of revamping that had a catalyst of of spurring the development that happened in that area and what are some of the other projects?
Yeah, so that one uh created not just the value from what we did, but it created over six hundred and fifty million dollars of additional development within that sector of downtown. Which is about twenty million dollars in annual tax revenue. Um, we are working with the Dallas Love Field Airport to build a car rental facility off airport grounds. Same kind of structure. We own the land. We lease it back to the city. So that's a big project. And that that because it's done privately, that's gonna be done a lot cheaper than if it was done through the city of Dallas.
Right.
And then there were several other lease transactions that we showed. Uh, and it's it, they're done for a reason. It's because a lot of these either municipalities or uh universities, they wanna preserve their capital, right? Or they don't wanna issue bonds because it it changes their bond rating. So by doing an off balance sheet transaction like this where it's a lease payment, it doesn't affect your capital and and it doesn't affect your bond rating or going out and issuing bonds. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, well, what what were, I I know the Farmer's Market, but a couple of others, you said Dallas, the Love Field.
Sorry, I'm sorry, sir.
What were some of the others around that you have done?
So there uh State Farm was done with our team for their corporate headquarters. There was Blue Cross, Blue Shield, uh, G S A. It's done some which is, you know, federal government. Uh, so there's been several. I can get you a list. And if you like, I think I had it in the previous presentation toward the end.
And I probably can go back and find that just the because you spoke of that and uh because of the partnership that you were able to create, just like you said, it it kept them in a in a different light.
Right.
So, okay, I would, uh, I guess I'll go back and check if I don't.
Right.
Or make sure to get it. It was in the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Bro, unless, is it it for you? Yeah, that's it for me.
It was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Five, ten minutes. We we appreciate the, we appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, council, uh, we're gonna take a five minute break.
You go ahead.
I thought mine was three and four. No, I see we're gonna take a five minute break.
Number three.
Okay.
What do you do?
I'm gonna do that's all private property. We only say that. I recently moved a guy beside his classic beach office for his place with my guy. For the last four or five years, he was a market man. He was fine. He was not doing it. He was in the market though. Kind of like. She's not really the brand, I think.
Well, I mean.
I mean, oh, I know. What's your first name? You and Andy. Andy says everything. So you've been working six years? And Andy's still working. I didn't say any more. Back then, I needed work. Yeah.
You didn't have that.
Except my story, my story.
Tell me your first name again. Thomas, I'm Steve Smith. So you've got another one.
Yeah, Mike.
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 My grand one.
Sure did.
Yeah, I I knew you had a, or. So are you over the mic? Okay, you're the little brother. Gotcha.
Oh my, oh my goodness, that was useless. Yeah, awesome, yeah.
Y'all good here?
Yeah.
I'm Green Brown.
Okay.
You want to bring me a cough drop?
No, I've lived in Lancaster since nineteen fifty nine. You see?
No, I think just allergies. I didn't even hear that.
I've got a little bit invested in this city. I haven't been alive yet. I barely have. My parents moved here when I was two. Raised our kids here. They all graduated from Lancaster. We just continue to need to move. She works here and I'm, uh, work from county. I retired from sheriff's form thirty eight years ago.
I'm gonna get an attorney. I'm trying to get along with an attorney. I'll be all right. I'm gonna set.
No, I was there six of those years on the street. I'll never more do it since I did street cut. You're the boss. Uh, I do. Yeah, well, which one? Hank Hank or his daddy? Yeah, Hank Hank is a little older than Hank, but his dad, Buddy was. Buddy, uh, his father was livestock way before Hank was. Hank Hank was, Hank told him, I am. He's quite a, I mean, quite a red face.
I was curious what happened. Yeah, he used the power for my phone to power the microphone. He's an advocate. Plugged it. He plugged it in the fucking this bitch. What we wanted, it was supposed to be a Bluetooth.
You know, I'm waiting for you to teach a good thing. Teaching kids a fashion, we teach them, like, no, it's A I. We teach kids how to use A I. Counting the, counting the negatives and the positives. You gotta get the A I. I just was curious what, I'm gonna tell you what other uh possible leases that they've looked at for spanning, you know? They can do a long term lease and we're not building here now.
And he said, also, what I mentioned, they might, I mean, what I mentioned, that's completely changed. Like, hell, the iPhone changed. That's fair. Like, anyone's a really big deal. We should go home, get on a, get on a computer. Remember AOL? And then all of a sudden, iPhone came out. It just revolutionized. Maybe, maybe that, maybe that E R six is a lot better.
This job.
We got, we got to see now a beautiful city.
You should both, first thing you have to what you're for. Thank you for your phone question.
I found a lot of those from here saying. And we already are. Well, not only can we report it right now, is that the top of our priority list?
Over there on his school?
Yeah.
That's very free. Very. That's very free.
North of Harvard still. It's not brown.
Wow. Whoa.
I wish they had that last street. I love that street.
I guess these are supply chains. It's better that way than.
I'd just like for their sales to come down and. I can't even get that. I've been all the. Then the first is open all this in July. So what do you know, Dave? You know what? Here it is October. Now, that's. How much time does it take to send letter? And then, and then if they don't comply, what are you supposed to do? Well, you've got another division that says, all right, we're gonna go do it. I try to stay out of the city politics. I just wanna, I just wanna live here. Yeah, I wanna be heard. Dead comrade, I wanna be heard. I've lived here since nineteen fifty-nine. I deserve to be heard.
You got some story tonight. He kisses all the shots.
All right, uh, City Council. Coming back in session, uh, that moves us to item number three. City Secretary.
Discuss residential subdivision parking regulations within the city.
City Manager.
Mayor, members of council, during your general twenty twenty-five strategic planning session, one of the items that you added to the list and asked staff to do a bit of research on it, bring it back to you for discussion, further discussion and decision-making, was related to parking on residential streets. Uh, many of you know that you get a number of concerns from residents about when they're parking on both sides of the street, the ability to travel down the traveled portion of the roadway. And, um, our master thoroughfare plan, looking at our local roadways, we have a total width of sixty feet from, that's from back of curve to back of curve, but only twenty-eight, uh, feet of that is traveled portion of the roadway. Uh, and so there was a concern and we didn't put a lot into it because we wanted to, right, to, you all said, bring it back for some discussion at a work session so that you could decide to determine how and if you wanted to proceed with considering restricting parking on one side of the roadway or not. In the strategic planning discussion, you referenced how that is done in, um, areas such as Bear Creek Ranch, which you, as you're aware, is a municipal utility district on one side of the county, and how they have restricted, uh, parking on residential streets on, uh, one side only. Or portions. And so this item was literally brought back to you all to determine if you wanted us to continue exploring, uh, that information or if you just wanted to know what the width of the roadway was. And this is just the item for that discussion and to determine if you want us to do additional research or bring back additional information.
City Manager, is that, uh, you talking about public, public street?
Yes, sir.
Cause all, I was always told that, that we couldn't dictate whether they could park there or not because it was a public street.
You can ordinance restrict.
Right, could you?
Parking to one side of the street or the other.
You have explicit authority that the Texas local government could to do so? So there's state law to do so.
So it has to be one side or the other?
It doesn't, right now, today, you can park on either side of the street.
Right.
And, and during planning, while indicated that you were receiving numerous complaints related to traveling down the residential streets. Um, because many of our residents utilize the street parking instead of the driveway or the garage. And so when cars are parked on both sides of the street, um, and a, a vehicle is coming in one direction or the other, um, someone has to back up because there is no, um, the roadway is not wide enough that you can pull off to a side or let a car pass, et cetera.
So is that, is that on all of our streets? Is that a, is that a problem on all of our streets? Uh, if, uh, traffic is coming in both directions, somebody has to pull over? Did any?
We haven't done a survey of every street. We, this is only based on, this was discussed in your, like, your strategic plan and based on your feedback. And yes, we do receive concerns related to that. Um, there were instances that you all noted related to emergency apparatus. If, if there is an incident on the street and an emergency apparatus has to come down the street, when vehicles are parked on both sides of one of our local roadways with twenty-eight feet of that being travel portion, uh, the apparatus cannot go down the street um, with vehicles parked on both sides.
So I know in one development. The streets are very narrow. I mean, really narrow. That I know a fire truck couldn't get up, eat away, come eat away on that. Now, it does, it was that uh, particular development created by the developer and, and, and not knowing the, the, the width that, that they should have made them streets?
So I believe if I'm not, I don't wanna make any assumptions. That's what I'm going to do. I'm making the assumption you're referring to the Tribute at Mills Branch subdivision where.
Over east as well, huh?
Uh, uh, that.
In, in, in Mill, in Millbrook East.
Mills Branch, Tribute and Mills Branch are, don't have the same width of streets. Millbrook East is your sixty, it's the twenty-eight feet travel portion. Millbrook, uh, Mills Branch, forgive me, Mills Branch is a planned development and they had different guidelines than Millbrook East. Millbrook East is twenty-eight percent of the roadway. It's, it's our local, it's designed, developed under your master thoroughfare plan requirements. The Tribute is different. They had a planned development and they had different sized streets that were approved in that subdivision.
And Millbrook, do they have, do they have different sized streets?
No, Millbrook East is.
Is the same.
I don't know. There's parts of it that have the same issue that Tribute have. If, if you have two cars parked, nobody's getting down the middle.
So that's on most of your local roadways. No, Tribute is even smaller.
Rebecca, if you got two cars parked, I go through them all the time. It's not as narrow as Tribute or Millbrook East.
So what's, what's, uh, just for clarification, what's, what's before, what's tonight?
So do you all want us to do more exploratory work to determine the width of all of our streets because the master thoroughfare plan, um, to determine, do you want more work done in? Cause you all said bring us forward and then you, it was put on the list. You said, well, bring it to a work session. We'll determine if we wanna do more work or if it was just an idea at the time. So this is for you all to give staff further direction on. What, what'd you like for us then?
If I remember correctly, I brought this up in the strategic planning. It was for the alleyway. Okay, when you come out of the alley, if you have a car parked there in the street across a, a, um, CWD garbage truck that's doing collections in the alley has a very hard time to make that turn. And sometime, and sometimes they miss and they run up on that homeowner's lawn and damage the lawn. And I know that I've been, over my time with council, involved with a few neighbors, the same neighbors that have had their yards tore up because of the trucks. Now, the CWD goes out and they correct it and they've done a beautiful job in, uh, solving that for the property owner. But my mindset is, let's see if we can correct this and eliminate this where something similar, what we have where you can't park a vehicle fifteen feet on both sides of a mailbox during mailbox delivery days. Okay, the mailbox has to be open for that truck, the mail truck to stop and make the mail. My thought process was kind of model it off as something like that. When you have the alleyway, you don't park a car thirty feet across the alley. So that truck, CWD, has an option. Makes it easier for them to maneuver those large trucks on alley pickup. Now, I was not involved with, and I don't remember the last time I'd had a concern brought to my attention about the roadways. But yes, there are some subdivisions in this city that are very narrow. In one of the cities in which I lived in, they had odd, uneven parking. Where, uh, on odd days, they parked on this side of the street and on even days, they parked on this side of the street. That's just an example, okay? But my focus was for the alley turn or CWD and the large trucks that visit the alleys for services.
So Bear Creek Ranch is an example of where if you go out and drive in that subdivision, that they have one side of the street marked off that you cannot park on it. And it was very interesting being in that neighborhood of how, how that worked. And they abided by it, but it, uh, so that gives you someplace close to be able to see how that works uh, in the neighborhood to give you an idea of. Because the whole, you know, the, when these developments, some of these developments are done, they were not done with everybody in the house having a car. And that's what occurred. You have six or seven people in there and you have six or seven cars and that's, they can't all park in the driveway or in the garage, or they get stuff in the garage and they can't park in the garage. So they park in the driveway and then they get four cars and so end up parking on the street. So it's, at least it'd be able to go and see a place that that has been done and it's working in that neighborhood. And it is strictly, cause I've asked about that possibility of being done uh, to be looked at. But I also know this, the situation that, uh, Councilman Jack Glasskey is talking about. I've had that call several times from citizens that have talked about the CWD trucks not being able to, and they wouldn't get serviced because they could not make that turn. Uh, and it, it was frustrating to them because of the fact they couldn't get their trash picked up.
Yeah, I mean, you have a whole row of, of, of houses that are affected with your trash service for one vehicle.
Cause one person will park right there.
Very aggravating and frustrating. I can understand. Trash is another hot button in this city. Okay, so, you know, if they missed their trash, oh, heaven's be. You know, but, uh, that was my contribution during strategic planning. Kind of model something to, model something off the, um, mailboxes for uses. Um, of course, that would have to be permanently. And I think that, you know, if we start there, you know, explore that and kind of ease in with that and, uh, enforce that into our subdivisions and our communities, um, then maybe we can explore other, uh, other options that come with the narrow roads with parking on one side of the street or the other.
We already have an ordinance about the parking of, with the, with the mailbox.
Yes, well, that's what I was saying, to model that T, T to alleyway, okay? Um, off of the mailbox. They do fifteen feet. If I remember correctly, it's fifteen feet on one side and fifteen feet on the other. So total of thirty feet.
So City Manager, did you see where, where this discussion started? It was because of the alleys and somebody parked in where the, the, the trash truck couldn't turn around. So, uh, I, I think that's what, where this comes in.
Well, I think, I think two things. I think we need to correct what we have, what happened in our design guidelines, make sure we have wider streets for all developments from now on. And correct, so correct that mistake. And then second of all, we gotta figure out, we have a parking issue now, how do we resolve that issue going forward? But I think we definitely, in our design guidelines, need wider streets. What happened in the Tribute and Millbrook East should have never been allowed. I mean, for public safety alone, there's no way to get ambulance or a fire truck down those road.
So you want us to consider an amendment to your master thoroughfare plan? To widen from sixty feet of right away, cause that, that, that your right away width is sixty feet. So you want us to cha, amend the master thoroughfare plan and bring you options for amending that, to change it from sixty feet to greater? And you want us to, uh, look at restricting parking on the front because it's, it's street parking.
Street parking.
Uh, within so many feet of alley entrances.
But what about the, the park on one, in those narrow neighborhoods?
They can bring us options for that too.
So restricting parking, um, limiting, uh, entrance alley, amendment to the master thoroughfare plan. And options for limiting parking to one side of the street.
Has anyone?
Give us, give us a couple of options there. You know, I, I don't know how the community would be receptive to the odd evens, the odd even sides. You know, in, in, in May, that would be an odd month. You park on this side of the street. June, you park on this side of the street. I don't know.
I, this, that might cause, that might cause some, some static. Uh, I think in, in the neighborhood, uh, because right now you got people parking on both sides of the street and you know you got to park in, in the direction that you live on. Right? I mean, the direction that. Huh?
You have to park the direction of traffic.
The duration of the, of, of the traffic, right? And so I think that that might cause a problem, uh, with, uh, with your neighbor or across the street or whatever. So I, I think we need to be a little, little cautious on, on, on approaching that, that particular problem.
So, so what would be the punishment of people parking? You can't even get folks there to read the map to put up on trash when they supposed to. So how you figure somebody gonna remember something from month to month?
Hey, sir, was this an idea? That was my contribution to the solution. If it's not, if it's not within reason? Hey, look, I don't have any dog in the fight with this here. My, my contribution during strategic planning was.
I wasn't talking about your contributions, Danny. I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud saying that, you know, you can't get people to do right with putting up trash out. They put trash out anytime they want to. And you talking about having somebody on a month-to-month rotation? Then what is gonna be the penalty for them, uh, not obeying by that rule? Is there a ticket or is there towing or what's gonna be the consequence?
Again, uh, I, I think that's gonna create a problem in the, in the community or the neighborhood because people are used to parking in front of their house.
Well, not only that, Mayor, uh, one of the things we have to take in consideration is that because, uh, there's been so many changes within, uh, society here of late. We have a lot of us, say, uh, children that are now coming back home. And because they're coming back home, just about everybody in the household has a own vehicle. So you have that to, to take in consideration too. And, um, we just have to, uh, be mindful of those things when you're considering it. You know, it's nothing nowadays to, uh, it used to be where just two cars in the driveway, you might see a parking lot in the driveway. You know, so it's, those are things that are actually taking place as we speak.
Anyone else? Do you understand, uh?
Yes, sir.
What, what needs to, to be taken into consideration?
Bring back, bring back information regarding, uh, restricting parking in front of the home, uh, near the alley. Amendment to the master thoroughfare plan to explore the travel portion, the right away from sixty feet to greater, bring you options related to that and bring you options to consider about parking on one side of the street or the other.
I'm, I'm good. I'm good. Thinking about what, uh, this Betty said. Where, if you have, uh, three or four cars in that, in that house and you restricted it parking on one side, where's the other ones gonna park? If you got already, you got one in the garage. So let's, uh, just recall. What you, you understand what the discussion?
We'll break back in for my.
Thank you. Uh, that moves us to item number four. City Secretary.
Discuss Article one eight point oh eight point oh four one of the code of ordinances regarding the city's driveway approach standards.
All right, uh, City Manager.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember McHale requested that we move, uh, this item that he requested to the December work session.
With the December work session? Who's pumping?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, council, that concludes, I'm sorry. I am sorry. We have a birthday girl in the house. None other than Deputy Mayor Phil Tim Gooden Davis. She turned twenty-three on the other day. We want to wish her a happy. We want to wish her a happy birthday and I think they got cookies, uh, chicken, greens and potato salad over there for us. So we wanna, we want to wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Now, with that said, uh, that concludes our business for the night and I will adjourn.
Adjourn, adjourn. A second.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn. All their favors they are. Uh, those opposed say no. Those are the things I've stated. We're adjourned at eight forty-three. Enjoy the rest of the evening.